Yeah.
And it's ready? It's on.
All right, welcome everyone to the 2020 Village of Marvin Retreat. I had prepared a one-hour opening, but I was afraid Mayor Pro Tem Kim may tear up the thing after this, so I'll just keep this very short. Thank you for all being here today. I think this is kind of a traditional thing that we do for the new council members that kind of the kickoff the year and determine what where we're going to go. And set some long-term goals, some short-term goals, so I'm excited. I hate to... I'm excited that you are all here and I'm kind of looking at this as turning the page and the past is the past and let's just kind of keep our focus forward on what we can accomplish in these next couple of years. So with that, I'd like to, I guess, are we going to just turn it over to the Central Line to guide us?
Yes, sir.
Geraldine and Savannah?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So good morning, everyone. I'm Geraldine Gardner. I'm the Executive Director of the Central Line and Council of Governments. We are the regional organization that supports our local governments, delivers services to constituents across the region, and helps to convene around matters of regional importance. So facilitation of retreats is one of the services we offer our members, and it was great that Christina reached out to us to see how we can collaborate and help you all move forward with what you want to accomplish here in the Village of Marvin. So some of you might remember that we supported you all in a community survey that you did in the fall, so we're really excited to kind of take the next step and help you think about how to put some strategic vision, mission, and goals down on paper to guide your work moving forward. So Savannah is a colleague of mine in our Community and Economic Development Department, and what we have for the next kind of only two hours or so, we're going to go over the agenda, the ground rules, do a little icebreaker exercise, and then we're going to spend some time talking about strategic planning, reviewing your mission and vision, and then we'll turn it over to Christina to really get into the weeds on budget. So that's really what we have in front of us today. Let's see if this works. All right. That's basically what I just said. Let's talk about some objectives for our time together. You all are elected officials. You're very busy. We want to use your time wisely and productively, so we worked with Christina to come up with some objectives for our time together. So we want to talk first this morning about the current mission and vision for the village, kind of look at it with a critical eye to see if it's something that needs to kind of proceed as is or make some tweaks to it now that we have some new council members on board. Want to give clear guidance to the team on where they should be placing their focus for the upcoming budget, so talking about some priorities in the capital and non-capital area. And then through our work and collaboration together, create an environment where you all can build relationships, find common ground as you go about your work together steering this community. Objectives clear? Anyone on board? All right. So let's talk about how the objectives translate into the agenda. So we find it's really important, as we've been doing retreat facilitation across the region, just to break the ice, kind of get everyone in the room thinking about what you're trying to accomplish today, so we have a short exercise we'll do in a moment. Then we're going to focus on where we're going as a community, so looking and reviewing at your vision and mission. We'll take breaks throughout, and then we will turn it over to Christina. She's going to walk through first the capital aspects of the budget and review the prioritization exercise that you all did. That was one thing that really struck me in working with Christina, to prepare how much homework she gave you guys, which is great compared to some of our other communities. So you have a running start to this conversation, which is really fantastic. And then we'll shift to the non-capital and operating, and we'll see where we are on time. We might break for lunch. We have a very detailed schedule. You all have an overview, so just trust us that we're going to get you through all these objectives, but feel free to ask for what you need. If you need a break, if you need clarification on anything, that's definitely something we encourage. So we're focused on listening and understanding today and then discussing key issues amongst yourselves. You all noticed the ground rules, but let's just go over those, make sure we're all on the same page. So one of the first aspects of the ground rules is that everyone, we need full participation. So the cell phones is a big thing, sort of pack them away, put them on mute as best you can. If you do need to respond to something, you know, step outside. Another one that I really like is no silent objectors. If something's bothering you, if there's an issue, if you need clarification, you know, that's what the purpose of this environment is, is to be able to ask for what you need and seek clarity. Practicing mutual respect is the next bucket of ground rules. Active listening, respect each other's ideas and comments. Assume you have something to learn. That's a big one. If you're actively listening, you're listening to understand and not listening to respond. Oftentimes, we're waiting for you to finish speaking so that we can make our point, but by assuming you have something to learn, you're really listening for what that person is talking through. And then the last one is really ask for what you need. So there is no such thing as a dumb question. There's no judgment around that, so feel free to seek clarity and make sure everyone at the table is understanding. Any amendments to these ground rules? Clarifications or things you would like to emphasize, add for the group? Seems pretty straightforward. Okay. I don't know if your group needs this, but we always like to go over this when we do retreats around active listening. This is just something as adults, we're sort of programmed to react, right? So you're Savannah's speaking to me, and I'm listening because I want to make my point right after her. So active listening is about paying attention, withholding judgment, reflecting on what you're hearing from the other person, clarifying, and then sharing what your perspectives are. So it's just a little thing for us to be mindful of as we're going about the conversation today. All right, so let's break the ice.
I would like to interject one thing.
Yeah, sure.
One point of order that we did not do is we did, we do have a, for the record, the Village of Marvin, we do have a quorum here, however, just want to make notice that...
We should adopt your agenda as well, even though it's a retreat agenda.
It's a retreat agenda, okay. I just wanted to make sure we were crossing our t's and dotting our i's, so pardon me for that.
No, very good. Do what you need to do.
So just want to make note that all council members and Mayor Pro Tem in here, other than Robert Epps being absent, and I'll start with the agenda that we have. Need a motion to approve the agenda for 2020 retreat.
I make a motion to approve the agenda for retreat.
All in favor? Aye. Motion. Thank you.
All right, no problem. I just want to draw your attention over there to this flip chart sheet here. We have a parking lot tool. So we are going to be topic and time-oriented in our discussion today, but it might be in the course of discussion, something comes up that's not germane to the conversation, but we don't want to lose it. So we will park that idea on the parking lot and document it, and we'll come back at the end of our portion of the retreat before you all go into closed session, review the items in the parking lot if there are any, and just decide how we're going to follow up on those conversations. Okay? Very good. Now we're ready to break the ice and talk about our little penguins here. All right, so Savannah's going to pass around a little worksheet.
Just take one and pass it over right now.
Yeah. So what we'd like you to do, and this is the Mad Libs style, for those of you who remember Mad Libs, is really, it's framed for the elected officials, but we'd love staff to participate. What we would like to do is for you to think about the moment that you decided to run for office. What was that spark in your life that said, "I want to get involved in this community"?
She left the match on the spark.
And for our staff, think about what drew you into public service. And we would like you to turn to your neighbor and interview them by filling out the Mad Lib, and then you will introduce your neighbor to the group. So this is really about trying to understand your motivations for doing the work that you do and serving this community. All right?
All right. So I get to interview myself.
And what's... Remind me what staff's going to think about...
What drew you into public service? So just tweak the...
Being a public servant.
Yes.
Okay, apparently you are my team. We're interviewing.
Why is she chicken now? Oh, she doesn't want to do that? Well, that's the whole point of that strategic plan.
Eighteen seventy-three.
So we put our name up?
I've been since 2014.
And then we're supposed to say, "This is what drew us, what drew us to public service". Do we put, do we still use the year?
Uh, yes.
Do we still use the year?
To run for county.
Yeah.
In the year you started working.
The county version's internal agenda is a little bit hard to talk about.
Joe.
Need a pronoun, isn't it?
Public service.
I think it's a pronoun.
Joe. Well, pretty much why you're looking here, I've seen you. Well, I was in all of this.
Okay, give me a verb.
This is a little hard to do.
I mean, that's what we're supposed to say, not supposed to say it religiously, right? Okay, verb.
I don't know if I'm going to fill this out. I'm worried.
All right, give me a pronoun.
I was just...
Wait, should we... Give me a noun. Shouldn't I be filling out yours or maybe I should be filling out mine? All right. Okay. Okay, so I'm going to say she. All right, give me a verb.
Was.
Huh?
Was.
No, the verb.
Was is a verb.
No, it's not. The action verb.
Oh, yeah.
My action verb.
An action verb.
Oh, wow.
That's not like you're... Are you going to do this? We're doing it like legit Mad Libs.
I don't know what the second question should be.
Give me a verb. Give me a noun. Read the sentence.
We're going to make it legit, Pope. We're going to make it legit.
I'm going to make it legit Mad Libs.
We even provided the definitions of the pronouns. It's not everybody remembers.
You just answer me. Give me a verb.
An action verb.
An actual...
They want to...
Okay, pronoun.
Well, that's...
Pronoun is a word that takes place of noun. Or other pronouns. Kiche, they, it.
They, it. Golf cart.
It's not a pronoun. That's a noun. I just told you. She, they, it. I mean, all right. All right. Okay, give me a noun. Situation. Okay. Give me a councilor's name. Give me a noun.
Or adjective.
Now, or adjective.
Mine was basically to...
All right, give me another noun.
Or adjective.
Like the sun. Okay, give me another noun.
Was... Interessant.
Verber adjective.
Basically, because I...
Pro noun. Which is a word that takes place of a noun or other, like a verb or a noun.
Want to shoot. And participate.
You want us to do a tip, right? No.
Sorry, now I know what you're saying.
That's basically...
No sidebar conversations.
You can do both.
I want to make sure, I want to make sure I'm doing the right thing.
Funny one in a real one if you want. Yeah, it's just to help you tell the story of why you're...
Broke it. That's not what Mad Libs are then.
That's true.
Let's do that visual.
Okay, let's go to that one. Okay. I'm going to do, yeah, I'm going to do Mad Libs.
I've been impressed. I wanted to be involved in learning through the year.
Eighteen seventy-four. I need two of those.
Participate more. Another year involvement.
Supposed to look around the room. You know, the involvement.
Here you go.
Sheep.
Like I wanted to. Sure.
Sheepish.
We've done this almost ten times now, and no one has ever wanted to do it the original way, so I give you tons of points for originality.
I mean, it's Mad Libs.
Exactly.
All right, sorry.
I did see it in a text message that I checked when I walked in here.
That's what she saw.
It's funny because I did print them, but she texted me saying, "I already printed this off". So even after I printed it, I just left it there.
See if you can go back.
Had to go back.
Now, right.
Oh, yeah.
There we go. Uh... Pronoun. The actual...
Joe.
Purple.
Why do you grab the one?
Verb or adjective.
She is not using...
A verb or adjective.
Is rewarding.
Yes.
Yes, she would.
She's got serious business.
Yeah, that's... Okay, yeah, it's rewarding.
She's chicken.
Thanks.
Oh, chicken?
Yeah. The chicken.
Exciting. Really, it's exciting.
Pronouns are interesting.
Pronoun?
Another one, yeah. It, they, he, she.
For me, I believe.
And then a verber adjective, last one. It. Wait, no, that's...
Oh.
That's a noun.
Or...
Whitening.
Okay, that's a noun too.
We are done.
You guys done? Okay?
There you go. We got one.
Very good.
Sorry, we'll just do you. Are you coming today?
Maintain... No, this one. Maintain and organized.
It's not at all.
Before we talk about, we actually execute. And yours?
I would say just come together.
Okay.
Okay, let's do a kind of real one for you now.
A kind of real one?
Yeah, just because we got time. Okay. Public service, can you have a verb for running for public service?
Do what?
Running for...
Sorry, while you were involved in public service.
Why? I was involved. Wanted to make a difference.
Okay.
Can work with stability and teamwork.
Okay, how about event or circumstance, like you did it? Did anything happen in your life?
Excited that her sister... She had to stay with another sister.
All right, everybody done?
Yep.
All right, Mr. Mayor, why don't we start with you? Why don't you introduce your partner? I'm sorry you just took a mouthful.
I did that.
Okay. So why don't you introduce your fellow...
I've never even done a Mad Lib once.
Are you serious?
Never done it?
Oh, my gosh.
Listen, I'm a lot older than you, man.
You're really not. You're really not.
I really am.
You're really not.
My birthday's coming.
Are you going to be sixty-five?
I'm fifty-nine.
Hey, you are old.
Come over here.
Just kidding, for those who are listening, fifty-nine is not that old.
Well...
Let's see, I'll start up here. Mayor Joe Polino's been a resident of the Village of Marvin since 2005 and was recently elected, well, when I say recently elected, he ran for mayor and won in 2013. He has just recently been re-elected for a third term. All right? Fourth term, excuse me. Okay, that's right, okay. He was excited, basically, to say yes to run because it was something new to him when he ran for mayor. He wanted to be more involved in the community and knew that he was going to be here long-term. He also felt a sense of duty running for mayor. He felt like he owed something to the community. To Joe, serving as mayor in the Village of Marvin has been rewarding and frustrating. Joe wants to see the Village of Marvin basically come together with a common vision in the next five years, and Joe hopes that the Village Council can actually get things done in the next year.
Great. Excellent.
All right. And my proud privilege to present to you Bob, council member, Bob Markelies, who's been a resident of 2013, since 2013, and was recently elected in the last election in 2019, December. He was very interested in saying yes and running for council because he wanted, again, to be a long-term resident, be involved in the community as well. He feels like being a participant involvement to serve his... He's always been interested in politics and also to serve others. He felt a sense of pride when he was running for Village Council. That was an important thing for him, and we're proud of him too that he was able to step up for the community. Bob Markelies is, as an elected official and public servant, is, for him, rewarding and exciting, both of those two.
What are you laughing at?
He also wants to see the Marvin, the Village of Marvin, maintain and with an organized vision in the next five years, and he hopes that the Village Council can work together with stability and teamwork in the next year.
I love you. That was lovely.
That was. They were both really good. You ready? I've never done a Mad Lib, so...
Mad Libs.
Mad Lib, whatever they are, so...
It was very well done. Thank you.
Let's put another rule down here, no making fun of people.
Sure. Not making fun of you.
I wasn't shaming you or making fun of you. I was laughing at myself.
I would say we'd be more specific. I say no making fun of Bob and Joe.
We had one councilman add no snarky comments.
No snarky comments.
Define snarky.
Can I make snarky comments about myself?
Here, Pro Tem. You guys...
Okay, all right. So I'm going to introduce Jamie. So Jamie Lyon, and I started it out right, and then I messed it up, but Jamie Lyon's been a resident of the Village of Marvin since '01 and was most recently elected to the Village of Marvin Council in '19. Asshole was running to say yes for running on Village Council most recently because this is Boris Boren. She felt a sense of golf cart running for Village Council. Polino, serving the Village of Marvin as an elected official in public service, is blue and sun. He wants to see the Village of Marvin cooking in the next five years, and they hope that Village Council can be sleeping in the next year.
Bam!
Sorry, that's a Mad Lib. That's a Mad Lib.
Never done one.
So on a serious note, council member, the last line, give us your real thought about where you want the Village of Marvin to go in that last line of the Mad Lib.
Positive and transparent.
Cool. Great, thank you. All right, now you can introduce your partner.
Kim Vandenberg, Councilman Kim Vandenberg, has been a resident of the Village of Marvin since 1874 and was most recently elected to the Village of Marvin in 1900. She was jumping to say yes to running for Village Council because, most recently, because of the Super Bowl. They felt a sense of hairiness in running for Village Council.
That actually probably fits.
To Jamie, serving the Village of Marvin as an elected official in public service is purple and dogish. They want to see the Village of Marvin skiing in the next five years. It hopes Village Council can go camping in the next year.
Obviously...
Welcome, campers.
Obviously, Councilman Markelies and myself take this job a little more seriously.
It's great. I love your perspective. All right, next year, I'm serious, and the next year, have a plan for town hall and have that plan executed and start working on, really focusing on getting things accomplished within the village that we have not had success in the past few years.
Great. And our staff participants?
Okay, we just have one because it's a while. This is the village clerk, Barbie Blackwell. Barbie Blackwell has been drawn to public service since 1989, and then we missed the next one. She was played to say yes for being a public service because of menopause. It felt a sense of home being part of public service. To Polino, serving the village as a public servant, is sheepish and certainly. They want to see the Village of Marvin chicken in the next five years. He hopes that the Village Council can be very windy in the next year.
Perfect. All right. Barbie, anything you would like to add on a serious note for that last, what you hope for the Village of Marvin in the next five years? As councilmembers, council member, can we make this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Accomplish the goals of the council.
Great. And Christina, anything that you would like to add to what you would like to see the village do in the next five years?
I'll just echo what Barbie said, is we also share the same vision that our board sets forth for us, so whatever the goals and objectives are for the board is what we intend to do.
Awesome. Great. Any other staff want to add what their thoughts are on the village, your aspirations for the next five years? All right. That's short and sweet. Okay, all right, well, the ice has been broken. Thank you for bringing some joy and laughter to that exercise. We've been doing that around the region, and it's the first time that someone actually did a true Mad Lib, so I give you guys lots of credit, everyone, but I appreciate the seriousness that our other council member and mayor brought to the exercise. So we got, so you have lots of aspirations about the future of the village, which I think is fantastic. We're going to move to the next item on our agenda, just talk a little bit about strategic planning. So one of the things that Christina mentioned to me is your idea, your aspiration, to really have the village embrace and create a strategic plan that I think will get to some of the things that you mentioned, having specific goals that you're going to work together on, and a clear vision for the future. So I'm going to walk you through just a quick overview of strategic planning in the local government context, so we're all starting from the same place, using the same language, and have the same expectations. Then we're going to review your current vision statement as a village and your mission statement, and we have some interactive activities that we're going to do to get your feedback. So a little bit of listening, and then we're going to shift into some more fun things. So the first thing that I want to share is this, what I'm calling a local government strategic blueprint. So when you think about strategic plans in the business context, when you apply that thinking to government, it gets, it's a little bit different. It has some of the same elements, but in government and in communities, there's constant change, there's constant churning, and the complexity of some of the challenges and issues that you all facing are pretty high. So a strategic plan kind of creates a multi-year roadmap to achieve a specific vision that you have for your community, and includes mission, core values, and goals, and we'll unpack that layer in just a moment. The next layer down in the strategic blueprint is the operational plan or your business plan. So what are you doing every year when it comes to basic services, specific projects or initiatives, things that you're investing in to achieve those goals and to realize that vision? And then at the bottom of the pyramid is your annual budget. So you need to have resources that are going to fund what you're doing on an annual basis, and ultimately, that investment that you're making as a village will help achieve your goals and achieve the vision. Make sense? So we borrow this graphic from the UNC School of Government. This is how they describe the role of council and staff. So they use a little airplane analogy, which I think is great. So green, it might be kind of hard for you to see back there, I apologize. So the purpose of this is to indicate that the role of council, that's the green, is So the purpose of this is to indicate that the role of council, that's the green, is really to fly at that 50,000-foot level, to decide the mission or their vision for the community, to help set strategic goals at 40,000 feet, work on priority items, which is that operational plan. And then as you start to shift down and the plane starts to land, the planning and oversight of that strategic plan and the operational plan starts to shift towards staff responsibility. Further down, projects are more on the staff responsibility with council's role being to do things like authorize contracts. And then finally, when landing the plane on the runway, the day-to-day work, that's the job of your staff. So this just emphasizes that your role is really about setting that strategic vision. Is this all clear to you? Okay, perfect. So let's talk about the components of a strategic plan and I'm gonna warn you, the next slide is super busy. Don't worry about the details. Really, all this is saying is that the foundational elements of a strategic plan are mission, vision, values. Okay? That sets the core. It defines where you want to, who you are, and where you want to go. The next level are the goals. How do you actually get there? And the third plank are measurable outcomes. So how do you know when your goals are being achieved? What do you measure? If one of your goals is to improve public safety, what are the things that you're measuring as an organization to see, are you working to improve public safety in the village? And then as you get further down in the details, that's where you start to have the connection to the operational plan, where you've got specific projects and initiatives that you're funding through your budget. Okay? Very clear? Awesome. So let's talk about vision. So vision statements really are about the future. It's aspirational, it's forward-thinking, it's where you want to go as a community. It's about the future outcomes that you use to shape your decision-making as a council, set public policy, make planning decisions, and investment. And it connects your stakeholders or key community member about an inspiring idea for the future. And really, that vision statement is the North Star. Everything that you're doing is about implementing that idea. So when you think about vision statements, then to summarize, they're future-oriented. They need to be simple. If you've got a vision statement that has 10 commas in it and lots of jargon, it's not memorable and it's not gonna get really to the core of where you're headed and it's not gonna be hard, it's not gonna be easy for your constituents to have a clear understanding of what are you all working towards and what is the direction that you're giving staff. So I have a couple of examples here. So the community of Dover, New Hampshire, I'm from New England, so I like a nice, good New England example. Their vision is to be a city with an emerging urban vibrancy guided by a small-town sense of community. Simple, not a lot of jargon, can kind of get your arms around it, aspirational. Delmar, California's vision statement has a little bit more content to it, but they aspire to be a residential community, which I think is really great. You know, not every community needs to have a mix of uses. Some communities are really about having residents. So they want to be a residential community with a vibrant downtown, tranquil place of natural beauty, where people feel safe and have opportunity. That's their vision. All right, so now let's look at your vision statement, and we have a handout, just so you can have it in front of you as we're talking. So this is your current vision statement. I'm not gonna read it to you because it's a lot of words. You can read it on the screen and have it in front of you. What Savannah did was review the community survey that you all did, and she picked out a couple of themes from the community survey that you can see have some relationship to your vision statement. So some themes around outdoor recreation and green space. There's a definite theme around responsible growth and quality of life. So take a minute to review your current vision. And let's talk about it. So I put up here some of the prompts around, again, sort of, this is not to say that you all need to change your vision statement, it's just giving you a framework. So we talk about vision statements being aspirational and future-oriented, memorable, community-specific and not generic, and simple without jargon. What do you think about your vision statement? Is it future? Let's talk about the first one. Is it future-oriented enough?
Well, I think.
Yeah, jump right in. Yep, Savannah's gonna take notes.
When you were giving us examples, I really liked the California-Delmar. It said to be a residential community and something that stuck in my head that Joe has always said is that, you know, we're a place that you come to sleep, you know, you go to to sleep, you know, it's, we're, we are a residential community. We've talked about a vibrant village center and a tranquil place of natural beauty with all sorts of, as you can see, from the survey. When I read ours, it seems like it's throwing a lot of stuff in there that is not necessarily not true. It's all true, but it looks like maybe the thing that's catching me is that it's, I don't know if it's as simple as it could be.
Okay, so you have, is it visionary enough for you?
You know, it's, it is, it is, it doesn't say vision, it's saying what we have. It's saying we have recreation and commerce and promoting historical roots while maintaining a small-town community atmosphere. So I would say our vision there would be, we want to, wherever, wherever direction we go, we want to keep a small-town community atmosphere. Then it says we also want to grow within the village sphere of influence while maintaining a community identity. I guess what catches me is the village's sphere of influence. What does that particularly mean?
Right. It's a little bit more mission-y, mission statement-ish, it's action, like what you can control as opposed to vision for the community. That's great. What do others think? You gonna say something?
No, I think we, I think in the context of what you're looking at, this kind of captures both the vision and the mission.
Great observation.
Whereas you could probably separate the two out and kind of do it from there, but I think it, I think it does explain who we are and where we want to always go.
Right.
You know, because there's never, you're never there.
Exactly.
You never get there.
Yep.
And so that's just my initial.
Is there anything that's missing from this in terms of what you want to maintain? To your point of, or?
Well, I think, I think, I think it's, you know, in there saying that, you know, we want to maintain our roots, we want to know where we're at.
Yep.
And we don't want to, you know, get far away from that.
Great.
And so I think, I think it's done a good job of pointing that out. Again, you've kind of mixed a vision and a mission all in one, so.
Okay.
To your comment of being more strategic, I look at this and if we were to strike the last sentence. It's pretty, pretty much spot-on, we want to attract residents. You know, I'd probably put in there somewhere, well, okay, what, if we're thinking about what brings, attracts residents to Marvin, it's the feel of, like, when you come from a high density to where you're at, what attracts them, so maybe inserting something like that into that, what, but just dropping the last sentence, we want to grow responsibly. We know we'd like to grow responsibly, we know that, and that's part of the strategic, but the, to your point about our, our sphere of influence, we can't, where we were going with that, so you know, because I've been involved in this since 2013, is we can't control what, we can only control what's within our borders. And our borders are sometimes not even clearly defined because of the, quite frankly, the state legislature's inability to allow a town to be a town and not have donut holes and stuff like that, so that's kind of where we were going, the sphere of influence, which sometimes we don't, sometimes we like that, you know, but that's more strategic on how we get things accomplished down the road. But just eliminating that and maybe inserting something on the vision of, you know, what everyone talks about, that Marvin's a special place and why it's a special place.
Is that what that small-town community atmosphere, is that what that is, or are you talking about something different?
I'm sorry, the.
In your, in your current vision statement, that last phrase, small-town community atmosphere, is that what you're thinking of, this feeling, or is it something different?
I, I think it's, I think it's.
I don't know what you're asking.
To, to the mayor's point, he felt that something needed to be added about the quality of the community or the atmosphere of the community?
Where we want to take, I mean, where we want to continue to, or keep Marvin. Marvin has always been called, it's just a special place. I mean, it was like, when I came here, coming from where I came from, and even all the locations me personally looked at, at homes.
Yep.
Then I was told about this place in Union County, have you been to Marvin? And I said, no, and I took the drive and as soon as I crossed that bridge, I was like, wow, this is different. And this is, you know, everyone has their space and it's like, you're not on top of each other and it's like, wow, this is a very good feeling. It was just a feeling that you got that was like, I feel like I'm out in the country, but I'm really not too far out in the country.
Okay.
I'm very close, I'm close enough to the Charlotte atmosphere, if you want that and stuff, so it just was different and it was, it was a place. We are, at the end, a community of homes. We're not that community that is worried, and that's some of the frustrating things when I go to these meetings to talk about all the problems and, you know, we're not looking to bring manufacturers in and create that type of environment, so a lot of it is, I'm in meetings and I'm listening, but it's a vision for Charlotte, yes, I get it, but not necessarily for Marvin.
So it goes back to the council member's point of residential community? Yeah.
You know, it's interesting because I had been, as these other folks know, I had an involvement with government for about three years in a town of about 50,000, which was in Utah. And the residents there, especially a lot of business people, were concerned about the epicenter, the identity of the community by its downtown. And so being a member of the National Trust for Historic Preservation and the Main Street Program, anytime I went to a small town, I really, in fact, it's become a hobby to me, wherever I go to a small town, I actually look for its identity, which can be found in the downtown. Well, I found myself in the same situation as what the mayor just said, that when I was looking to move in this area, the first thing I wanted to do is, well, where's the town hall? Okay, where is the identity?
Right.
It's almost going to what, you know, Councilman Hand was saying, is that you almost look like, okay, where's the, where's the town, where's the town hall? When I saw the house, I went, really? You know, actually, the church looked more of a figure head to the community. It looked like, well, this must be their downtown, but it's mostly residential. I thought it was a unique-looking community that was more about residential than it was an identity from, from a downtown standpoint or a village center.
Mayor Proton, what's your thought on the vision?
I think it's great.
Okay, what about that last sentence?
I'm fine with it. Because we did, that is one of the biggest things that we do and it is part of our vision, is to continue to grow responsibly. So I'm fine with it. With the mayor explaining what village's sphere of influence means, that might be able to get cleaned up a little bit so that other people understand what that means, but.
All the elements are there.
I'm good with it.
For a second. Great, so we thought so too. What we pulled out on this, I guess, left side are some of those phrases from your vision statement, right, that have some really unique characters. Open space, historical roots, small-town atmosphere, growing responsibly, and maintaining community identity. So if you think about a vision statement, you've got it really good, what you have now, we're not gonna rewrite your vision statement in this room, but what I want you to shift your thinking on is how do you actually get these things to happen? So what I'd like you to do, we're a big fan of post-it notes and Cog, is I'd like our council to try to answer this question. How does the village administration and the council together achieve these five things? So you're gonna write one idea per post-it note. Over here, you? One idea per post-it. You can hit all five of those, you can focus your attention on one or two. Which color would you like? Cool, good choice. You got it? Okay.
All right, it's quiet. Am I supposed to just like hold on to them?
Hold on to them.
Yeah, I'm like whispering like I'm taking a test.
Well, don't cheat.
I saw you cheat.
Why was she, I was cheating off of Christina too. I know, it's like really quiet here.
Oh, I'm so studious.
Play the Jeopardy thing.
I think that would make Kim's problem worse.
Make it more stressful.
Oh, we could play Andre Pachelli, he's going to be here next week.
Oh, he is?
Yeah.
I'll give you another minute or so. Or you can have more time if you need it. It's really up to you guys.
I need to apologize to the council, to the mayor. I notified the mayor this morning that I need to go to a doctor's appointment that's rather urgent of something I'm experiencing just last night. I am not going to the Trump affair. I'm actually going to be in Lakeview, so he can track me.
Can we have you do a tracker on your phone?
Yeah, you can do it.
I want a doctor's note.
Councilmember-
I will, I will bring back a doctor's note, I'll be happy to. I apologize, I will be back. I'm going to leave all my stuff here, so I'm hoping it's not the original.
Councilmember, before you leave, could you do me a favor? And place your post-it notes on the appropriate topic that you- We can do a readout for you, if that's okay, just to summarize.
Do we need to excuse him?
No.
Because you're not taking any action, so.
But I wouldn't excuse him. I wouldn't excuse him.
Okay, so then he's just a yes vote if we vote for something?
Yes.
Perfect.
Just make sure you don't forget to-
We're definitely going to sign you up for something, Bob.
I know you are.
He opens himself up. It's so easy.
About somebody probably.
Say hello to Matt Alani.
We need someone to rake all the leaves in the village of Marvin over the next year.
You know Bob should do that.
I make motion, Bob, rick the leaves. Get your rake ready.
Since the first meeting, she went to the bathroom.
Are you actually looking for a specific action items on this?
Whatever comes to your mind. Think about in the goals sense. I wouldn't get too micro, but you can.
Because I was going to go micro.
But again, I was thinking of it as the graph, the slide several ones back from our standpoint and our viewpoint and vision is that we're looking at it from that 30,000, 40,000-foot view to, and that's how I did mine. So mine are not going to be micro, they're going to be macro. And I could, I could be totally wrong, that's just what comes out.
Go with your gut. All ideas are good ideas, it may not be in their final four, right? All right, what we're going to do next, stop.
No, I've got a couple of them.
So what I'd like you to do, we're going to go one by one. Come up, present to your peers your ideas, and land them on a particular topic. So hopefully you gave your post-it note idea related to one or more of these dots, and just sort of share out what you wrote down and which aspect of the vision statement it goes to.
I'm going to go first.
Go first.
Providing open space.
Okay.
We need to execute approved plans already set motion and assign more money to it.
Very good. Keep rolling. If you've got more.
Open space, I said identify the areas we want to focus on.
All right, the power behind this. Historical roots, we need to have programs with Jean Chetso to show our history.
Micro.
I'm fine.
Balance residential growth with family-oriented activity.
Or about community.
Wait, what's that?
About community.
Balance residential growth with family-oriented activity.
Dot community identity.
Yes.
Or growing responsibly.
Okay, so my maintaining community identity is have more community events for people to get together, neighbors.
Small-town atmosphere, I put create more opportunities for events or get-togethers.
Ow! It's not here.
Maintain a small community.
That one, okay. All right, maintaining identity for each town hall. Growth, growth. Tight ordinances.
What'd you say, tight ordinances?
Establish a welcoming and relevant town hall. Growing responsibly. Invite experts to help guide us through this process. What?
That's a good one. I mean, serious, that's a good one.
I just never know how to read. It's like I'm getting slammed again.
Man, that's a really good one.
Invite experts to help guide us through this process.
Like you guys.
Because we are not, we are, this is a perfect example of having you here. Thank you for being here to help with this. But also, I'm telling you, this is my number one concern, that between planning board and all the different boards we have, we don't have, no one's created a community, downtown community that we all want. No one's done it.
All right, put it up there. Keep going.
Build and promote area for family activity.
Say it again.
Build and promote area for family activity.
Which one does that get on?
Small-town community atmosphere.
Providing open space for recreation and commerce.
Like it.
Then my last one was promote the highlights of the village and the privilege of being a part of. So really was just going to kind of getting into that hall of it, kind of centered around growing it.
Yep.
Filling in the donut hole.
Yep.
And then-
So that's like a twofer.
It's a, I wanted to be a privilege to be in the village of Marvin.
You what? I'm sorry?
Yeah.
I would see it being a privilege to be in the village of Marvin and let the donut hole fill in itself. As opposed to us going to them, they're going, you know, we provide, we provide the highlights of why. People aren't, you know, want to be represented by the village of Marvin.
I like it. It's like a twofer. It's like you can put it right in the middle.
Yeah, the ETJ that I, you know, said like, never go.
The county doesn't want exactly that much, but we'll figure out something.
Mayor, do you have more on your?
I, I, I thought you had to fill out every sticky note.
Well, no, I was going down each line. Okay, so historical roots, right away I thought of Jean, because a lot of people don't even know the historical, why, how Marvin came to be. And quite frankly, it's only, even though it's a 100-year-old story, it's only been, we've only been Marvin for, since 1994, 95. So it's like, we're still so young and stuff, and it's like, how you promote that historical roots. And so I'm struggling with that one. And then community identity, I mean, that's another tough one for me, because it's like, I mean, the identity changes a little. What is Marvin all about and stuff? I mean, I like Jamie's ideas that, you know, when we look at, and getting comments as far as growing responsibly. I mean, we have our borders, but within our borders, there are borders. It's frustrating, and it's like, what do we do to bring them in? Do we go to them, or do they come to us? But if we go to them, we got to come, we got to, we got to give them a reason to pay that five-cent tax, or whatever that tax is. And most people, they're getting the representation, it's unfair. They're getting it without, they're getting representation without taxation, which is frustrating. Nobody wants to pay a tax. But when you say you're really a truly Marvin, I think it's just, you know, the fact that you live in the town of Marvin, identifying that.
But you're, to your point though, most would not know who Marvin is. They know it as a name. When I go to, when you go to any town, there's a, in a town hall, they have a sequence of timeframe. So you can go back 100 years and take pictures and find those pictures and put them on the board. You know, old man Marvin, you know, had his farm here. And that's how, and then you go through that, you go down that sequence, and then here's where you are today. That lends itself to doing the things, the little things, that I think they're just little things. We don't have to do big things, but the little things like garbage, security, and those type things. Eifer Park, and promoting those things where people go, in their communities, and going out to the HOAs and going, "Why aren't we a part of it? We should be a part of Marvin." And that's why we want them to go, "I want to be a part of that."
You're talking about voluntary annexation?
Right, we work with the HOA and saying, "Listen, we're doing this, and this, and this." And the people that are actually currently in Marvin going, "I don't mind paying the tax." You can charge, because the survey says, "Charge me more."
So when you're talking about growth, it's not necessarily about building more, it's about bringing more into the fold?
Right.
Is that, okay.
We don't have that much more open space to build on.
Okay.
So our responsible growing is bringing in, filling up those donut holes and bringing people in. But the open space that we do have left needs to be done responsibly.
Great. So let me just recap what councilmember Markalasing-
Markalise.
Markalise said. So under providing open space for recreation and commerce, he suggested look to establishing a village center and gathering place. So he has that here. Promoting our historical roots, establish markers on historical homes and churches. Maintaining small-town community atmosphere, monitor growth and provide reduced traffic.
What did he say there?
Good luck.
Put in toll roads.
Monitor growth and provide reduced traffic.
Monitor growth. I wonder what he means by that.
We can ask him when he comes back.
Okay. Put that on the parking lot.
Sure. Under growing responsibly, evaluate each residential and business product, project in accordance with land's plan. And maintaining community identity, the use of logos, communication mediums, and signage with the monitoring of growth in mind.
And that's why I was asking, are we going to get micro on it? Because we had talked about that, and I thought it was like, you know, one of the things that identifies, you don't know if you're a Marvin or not. My own wife doesn't know when we're in Marvin, when we're not. I have to tell her where the boundaries are, which sometimes I'm not clear of. But as far as communities, going back to HOAs, we've talked about part of the roads that we're doing is installing like little caps on top of all the roadways, which have the Marvin logo on it. So you know, when you're in that, you drive in that community, you look at the street on top of that sign, it's just a little, you know, cap with a Marvin, or attaching it to the pole somehow on each pole, saying that you're in the village of Marvin and stuff.
And that's an example, just in terms of the strategic plan framework, right? If party, this is connected to your vision, right? Maintaining small-town atmosphere, maintaining community identity. A goal, right, would be a little bit more specific than that, but not so specific as attaching banners on light posts. That would be an example of a project or an activity that would go in like an annual work plan, business plan, operating plan, and get funded, right? Is there anything? Let's just go through these real quick, make sure all terminology is clear. And if there's anything missing that jumps out at you, sort of from that goal perspective, right? So we're talking about how does the village administration and council provide for open space and recreation? So we've got identify open space areas, execute on approved plans, establish a village center and gathering place, and promote area for family activity. Can you say more about that, councilmember? Is that a specific project, or is that like, is it more about the village center?
I made the statement more to find a balance as we start to fill in the donut hole that we give, that there's activity there. You, my thought of it is, as you create enough, if I want to spend the weekend here, I've got enough to do here. If I really want to go to, you know, blow it out, I go to Charlotte. But there's enough here between Eifer Park, between, you know, going to some shops or something, or visiting town hall. There's enough to do to keep me here.
Okay, so is multi-generational a good word?
Yes.
Okay, great. So anything missing from this? Big aspirations around providing open space and recreation? Are we pretty much covered? Yes?
Can I, well, I just wanted to add to that, that was noted by our Parks Chair. We had set a goal in our 2008 master plan that we should have one acre per 100 residents. And we're a little behind on that goal now, that we have, we should have 70 acres for 7,000 residents, but we only have 27, 28 acres. So I guess it would be a good time to either reduce the goal or catch up to it, depending on, you know, how we feel about that goal. We have that 27, 28 acres right now. We should, if we were-
So that kind of ties into what, you know, as you start to fill in the donut hole, have enough for them to do. And again, it promotes people wanting to come in, that there's enough to do. That's a great, by the way, I think that's a great, I think that's a great, you know, rule of thumb to have the number of acres to-
What is it right now? Because I, you were, I could vary.
Oh, sorry, I should probably have been speaking this way. The goal was one acre per 100 residents, and we're kind of, one acre of parks. Yeah, one acre of parks for 100 residents. So we should be at 70-ish, but we're only at about 28.
So, I mean, I was thinking about that too, how you, how you can get there, or at least make the feeling that way is where they, I forget the terminology, maybe you can help me with it, where they get the same density out of a parcel of land conservation type development, where you get the same, the same, the same density on a certain parcel, 100 acres, whatever it is, same density, but you allow smaller spaces for them to build.
Cluster subdivision.
But that's not what he's talking about. He's talking about legitimate park space.
Like public parks.
Not like open space within a neighborhood, like a dedicated park space.
I understand, I was just saying from the feel of it, like, there's a couple, you know, we, for instance, and I'll give you a for instance, as you come down Marvin Road and you cross that bridge, there's a home that's in a floodplain off to the right, but off to the left, there's acreage there that- acreage there that whatever happens with that, does he have a right to, by right to, what could happen with that? I mean, it's just, that's one of the great feels I get when I see that lot. And then if you make a left on Joe Carr Road before you get into Marvin Creek, off to the left is open space. Which is buildable and stuff. So it's like, you know, how, because in the end, we can't control what is built because of by right. And, but if we allow certain things to still create that atmosphere, at least it gives you, we may never get to the goal, but it gives you the same feeling that it's.
But it's not land that we can go and use.
I agree. That's, I agree and that's, I agree.
Like I think it's two totally separate topics, what Rome hit saying, what you're saying, which I agree with both topics.
The problem is we're out of land.
No, that's what's gonna be my comment to Rome.
Right. So we're out of land and I had proposed years ago to multiple mayors of surrounding towns and saying, we need to create, and I told this when you were there presenting to the Union County conditioners, that we need a multi-municipality bond to go in and find that land that we all can share as communities because we don't have it. And I will tell you this, that as my kids grew up, and if you're in this situation now, the WCA fields that you would play soccer on, that was your, if you didn't make the high school team, you were going over there. Because it's in a floodplain every time you're ready. You'd never get practices, never get games, you'd always be outside. So, but there's huge land parcels around that we could share in and share with other people.
So Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna put that on parking lot. We think a little bit more about how to, what are the strategies that you guys are using? That could be a follow-up to get, bring some clarification and some ideas. But I added this sort of goal around achieving the goal that you'd already set around the per capita, just as a reminder. Moving on to historical roots, the two items we have here are establish markers and having programming around history. So those are two really solid suggestions. Anything missing here? Or this pretty much captures it?
I mean, I think if, once we have town hall and we absolutely have more prominently displayed informational pieces for the history of Marvin.
Okay. I'll add that on here. The next one is maintaining small town community atmosphere. We've got promoting the highlights of the village, monitoring growth, and then two on more events. So two suggestions around community events to know their neighbors. Anything from a goal perspective that might be missing? Are you all satisfied with these?
I think from a like a 40,000 foot view, that kind of captures it.
Okay.
And then I think if you really, once you start to dig in to say, okay, what, what do we do? I mean, what are the things that, you know, that we can do as the village? I mean, I'm just throwing this out there. Marvin, in the Village of Marvin Day, where we have a parade, let golf carts right down the road, block something off and where people come out and they, and they do it. I mean, small towns do it all the time. They promote, they promote their town. And my friend is in Idaho, they have 1860 Day, which is what the, you know, one day, one day a year where they close, they close down the downtown. And you just do, you have street vendors and you have, you have stuff and they have a parade and they do, they do fun stuff. They have lumberjack contest and they do, you know, stuff to promote the town. We sleep.
Yep.
And somewhere we, we could dig into that and go, we need to have Village of Marvin Day.
And I think it's a great idea. And we've talked about it in Park Truck and Greenway. And we have talked about having like, doing like a, like a 5K around Marvin. You promote the greenways, you promote the loop, you end up at the, at the park and you have a thing. The problem is, what I think, I think one of the hindrances is, is we don't have enough staff. The volunteer Park Truck and Greenway Board can't do it on their own. We need more people. And we had talked about at one time, having a, more of a events group underneath the Park Truck and Greenway, but it's never come to fruition. And I think that it is important. I think we should have those things and, but I think we, we need more staff in order to help execute those ideas. So, I mean, I'm with you. I think that, having those types of programs and events and things like that.
So that is a great illustration of that goal around events hovers right here. And you all, if you're gonna say, this is our goal, then it's up to the staff to figure out what are the resources we need and to come back to you and say, okay, we see this goal, but we actually have some operational challenges or some funding challenges. And so that's where you're, you're kind of, these feedback loops, your role, set the goal, their role, tell you how that they can make it happen and what resources they might need. All right.
And just quick to add to that, that goes in and of itself back to the promoting of the community. Because if I'm sitting in the reserve, where's my day? I don't have a day. I'm the reserve. And, you know, when you have, you know, pick, pick an item, an event that happened in the Village of Marvin that's significant and create that day as the day of Marvin Day, do a 5K or do, you know, something like that. But that's the thing that promotes everyone else to want to come into it. And when you, you know, if you build it, they will come. Well, it's here, we're just not doing anything with it.
All right. So moving to your fourth aspect of the vision statement, how do we grow responsibly? Two comments really about using your ordinances, evaluating projects, using the land use plan, keeping the ordinances tight. That makes very total sense for this aspect of the vision. And then one comment about balancing residential growth with failure oriented activity. So that seems to be around multiple uses and multiple amenities, kind of similar to your comment here, which I think is great. And then growing responsibly, inviting experts to help you all think creatively and what might be good practice. So very good suggestions here. Last but not least is maintaining community identity. We talked about logos, communication and branding. And then two comments about town hall really being the anchor point for creating and maintaining community identity. Anything else you want to add to those? Okay. Excellent job. What we're gonna do with this information is in our report about the retreat, we'll type these up, suggest them as goals back to the staff. And then you all can take the next turn to sort of refine them and decide how you'd like to proceed. But you've all created a very good framework and an initial step at linking your missions or your vision to a series of strategic goals. And you might wanna, we're gonna leave these up here when we go to the budget portion of the conversation. Because that, again, thinking about our inverted pyramid, might be a good filter to look at some of the things that Christine is gonna walk you through and think about how does that align with some of the mission elements and the goals that we talked about? All right. Y'all good? You want a stretch break?
I'm fine. You all right? You all right?
I personally don't.
Chop, chop.
All right. Let's press on. Okay. Good. All right. Let's turn to mission. All right. So the mission of an organization is why you exist. Why are you here as a village council and an administration? So the mission of an organization really needs to communicate the what of what you do and the why. All right? So here is an example of a typical mission statement, Mad Lib, leading with the why. We blank by how and what. Town of Dover ensures all persons the opportunity to enjoy contributing to and being a part of the Dover community. That's their why. That's why they're there. By providing affordable, high quality municipal services and responsible, responsive local governments. That's the what. City of Durham improves the quality of life in our community by delivering cost-effective, highly responsive services with integrity and friendliness. Okay? So it's why is the village council, the village administration? Why do you exist? What are the services, the quality of experiences that you're offering your particular communities? The other way of framing it is to lead with the what. So leading with the head. This is what we do and this is why it matters. Percival, it's Virginia, provides leadership, stewardship and policies that produce a vibrant community where residents delight in living, participating and welcoming visitors. That's their why.
They delight in that.
Stockton, which is in Georgia, provides visionary leadership and superior municipal services.
Rule breaker.
Got the turn on.
Stockton provides visionary leadership and superior municipal services that enhances the quality of life for citizens and creates a welcoming business atmosphere. That's their why. Makes sense? So pretty straightforward. Let's look at your current mission statement.
It's really long.
It's really long. I think these are more about values. Everything in here is spot on. There's some really great stuff in here about how you behave to each other, how you behave and act to your constituents, but doesn't really tell me what you do as a council and an administration or why it matters. So a little bit of why. What are your guys' thoughts on this?
Did you have that one printed out too?
I think we have, well, we have the mission exercise.
We have it on. We didn't print that one out.
Yeah.
First off, it is way too long. Second off, it is, it's a, great points. I mean, everything in there is positive, but it's not a mission. What is, what is our mission as a, as a government in the village? What, you know, so that needs to be, and to me, because in creating the businesses, as an entrepreneur, one of the first things I do is I create a mission to hold me accountable. But that mission is very short, direct and simple.
Right.
That's where I would hope that we would go to be something, and that, it's a two line, two sentence.
Powerful. Right? Can you give us your, what, the company that you have? Can you tell us your mission?
It is to provide the top quality marketing to my, to my clients with an open and transparent process.
Awesome.
Simple enough. I mean, I can sit there and talk about everything else that goes underneath it.
Exactly.
But my mission is to provide the, you know, the top quality marketing.
Right.
To my clients with open and transparent, about open transparency.
A good mission statement leads wants people wanting more information. You can't give them everything. Like the mission of Centralina is to lead regional collaboration and spark local action to improve quality of life and expand opportunity. The what, the what of what we do, lead regional collaboration and spark local action. The why of what we do is to improve quality of life and expand opportunity. So it, it's just like the roll off your tongue, right? And just be that first thing that you say. And then Savannah might say, well, how do you do that? And then I can tell her like, oh, Marshall deal. Or she can. So it's really, that's the piece of this.
I think the first part of those, the first two sentences for me as a staff member is what Marvin's mission is. I think that's what council and staff strive to accomplish.
Right.
And then the rest of that is what their core values are.
Yeah.
Based on how we see each other.
Right. Exactly. So it's, there's a lot of good stuff in here and it's not about throwing the baby out with the bathwater. It's just that most of this is about value, which is a really important part of your strategic plan. You have to have those core values, especially as a local government entity and you're stewarding the public trust and the public resources. So they better know what you're standing for. But it's just going back to your vision, or yeah, your vision statement, that last line that some of you pointed out, that it has like more mission language in it. If you think about that in this first line, it's kind of getting at what you all are, what your what and your why is. All right. So we're gonna do a little experiment. And the disclaimer is, writing vision and mission statements as a group is some form of medieval torture. Okay? It is. Because everyone's got a different take on it. So what we're not gonna try to do today is to come to consensus on, on something. But we do need your ideas. All right? So what we'd like you to do, and we're gonna give you this little, you can take one and pass it out, pass it down. And staff, you all can participate in this too, because this is part of your, you can lead with your head in a mission statement or you can lead with your heart. So the heart is the why and the head is the what. So on one side of your handout, you have, if you prefer to lead with the what or lead with your head, on the backside is if you prefer to lead with your heart or lead with the why. Choose a side, whatever feels right to you. I just want you to take a couple minutes to brainstorm. If you had to write a mission statement for the village, what would you do? I'm gonna put your old one back up, or your current one, I should say.
Can you go back to the, to the other ones that were actually appropriately laid out?
Yes. Like that one?
Yeah.
We also have a version of this handout that has.
It also has the examples on it.
We have the examples too. So if you want to use these as reference, we'll welcome to you. Pass those down. So you got lots of paper.
This is the, this is the, give those clues of what everything is, what the what, the why, do. Okay. Yeah. Okay, good. Can you go back to ours then?
Yes, ma'am. Okay. So we're not going for perfection. We're just, we're creating ideas. We're brainstorming.
Can you go back to the good ones?
There's that one.
Okay. Can you go back to ours? Sorry.
Go back to the first example of a why from those communities and stuff.
That one? Or the other one? Okay, if you're done with yours, you can post it on the doors.
It's not for grade people.
It's not for grade.
Brainstorming.
No, it's great, I love, but I am. Oh, there's only four slots.
You can put yours up. All ideas are good ideas at this point.
She's one piece of tape though. She said that we could, right?
Okay, if you're done with yours, you can post it on the doors.
It's not for grade people.
It's not for grade.
Brainstorming.
Yeah, but I am. Oh, there's only four slots.
You can put yours up. All ideas are good ideas at this point.
She's one piece of tape though. She said that we could, right?
I don't know if I can get anything from this side.
All right, you got a minute left. Yep.
I do.
The how and the why are the...
You done, council member? You only had to do one side. Yep, just one.
Maybe others can help you with the how and the why, but I'll just, I'll go with...
Very good.
It's fine if you don't finish it all. I mean, every idea is good.
There are no bad ideas, right, or...
Right. Especially in brainstorming.
What time are we doing it?
They need the words by 11:00?
What time is it?
I don't know, that's all I know.
I want this side of the red.
I was gonna say, why is he an apple?
Yeah. No, 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 I'm saying, what time is lunch?
I don't know.
Well, Christine, that's not reading my flash drive right.
Uh-oh.
Oh, that happened to me too. Just take it out and put it back in again.
That's the, it, for some reason, this thing listed as two drives, and I don't know why it does that, because this thing's 16 gigs, and it's up here. If I put it into your, into your surface, it was working then, but...
Oh, don't format it, because that will...
That will erase everything.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Three words comes to work, so we can make a, we can make a trip to village hall and email.
Okay.
So that's, this is really interesting.
Two of you led with the heart with the why, and two of you with the head with the heart, oh, sorry, the what. So, let's start with this one. Mayor Marvin, this is your contribution. We, the Village of Marvin, strives to maintain strong relationships with community by providing efficient and friendly municipal services.
That wasn't me.
That's me. You're not fair for them.
Oh, I thought you said mayor.
Listen.
I wish, what was that again? Because I was like...
Why do you all come up? And it's probably gonna be easier to look at that, especially for some of the handwriting that I might not be able to, certainly. Take a look.
What, did you do it?
Yeah.
I did the one on left, the bottom left.
It was fair to say.
I thought the mission statement was meant to be a little more...
Oh, no, I'm not saying it's wrong, I just, it was more...
I should have been done with what I was doing, because the whole how and why.
Also, Roque, I love who led with our hearts.
Yeah.
So read them out, your contributions, so that others can hear.
Yeah, you were redundant. That's okay, I like what you said.
So, read it out loud for everybody.
We, the handout, support the policies and leadership that provides a safe and active community by promoting...
Because she has saved it. I could email it from her laptop or something. That's okay. Rachel, what is your, what was your...
Mine said, we provide the leadership and policies that create a community where residents want to live.
By...
That's where the by, how do we get that? That's my big concern. Why, we want to preserve what we have.
Well, you know, we don't have to be like so strict.
I know it worked on there.
We provide leadership and policies that create a community.
That's your by, that's your create, create. Community, and that's your why.
Exactly.
You got it. You got it right there, you just didn't spread it out.
Okay, that's where I'm supposed to...
I like yours too, right there.
We wish to preserve Marvin's rural residential character by tightly managing growth, maintaining low-density zoning, promoting our recreational space, and by being inclusive and respectful to the community.
That is like so the planner, like it was all about...
Planner, yeah, exactly. But some good thoughts in there.
Where do you go, kid?
Village of Marvin strives to maintain strong relationships with community by providing efficient and friendly municipal services.
Or G. Gardner, should we all need to be friendly?
That's kind of science.
Right?
Good.
And got everything.
All right. Short, sweet, just a point, baby.
So we'll invite, um, Councilmember Marcolis to do the same exercise, we'll get his ideas up there. And then we'll report out. And in terms of our next steps with this, so we'll, we'll write up your statements, we'll get his in the mix, and then we'll give you guys some options to think about that pulls in some of the ideas.
That's what I was gonna say, will you guys like kind of take it and kind of smoosh it together?
We'll do a smush, yeah. But I think what might be helpful for us is for you all to come to consensus, do you want to have the what, leading with the what, or leading with the why? That would be helpful for us to know from the council members' perspective.
I think from the heart.
If we all have a vote equally, which normally I don't have, otherwise it's up to you two, but if we all have a vote, we, you guys, Bob's not here, and we're missing a council member, so we're making this, when, can we, can we delay this decision?
We can give you two options. We can give you a what option and a why option. Do that thing.
Do both.
Yeah, give some heart and head.
That's easy. And then you can decide from there.
Sometimes the government would have a heart.
All right. So that, all right, so the very last thing that I just want to close the loop on with you all before we move on to the budget, is that, so your current mission statement, from my perspective, oh, come on.
Give it a second, it takes a second to register.
Okay. So, we took your current mission statement, and from our perspective, that, all of that really rich, important language really was about values. So we took the liberty of just kind of pulling that out from the clean sentences into a series of bullets. Strives to form strong relationships with citizens, remembers to serve the people, respects all citizens, recognizes that integrity of its reputation is paramount, promotes tolerance and will not tolerate disrespect or dishonorable actions, remains open and transparent at all times, and commits to excellence. That was all in your mission statement. It's really great content. So we'll, you know, we can include this in the report, and you all can decide if you want to just reframe that as value. And add more if you care to. All right. So that's what we wanted to leave you with. I mean, since we're having some technical difficulties, let's take our...
Can I, can I ask, as you, as you leave this? So, we're going through this exercise, so at next year's retreat, is this something, is this a living and breathing document, or is this something we kind of, we kind of established for the next 10 years? And the reason I'm asking that is, as, let's just say we had a, a true structure town hall that was just nice and vibrant, should that not, I would believe that these should be posted up there, so if someone walks in, they can read not only our, our vision, our mission statement, and they see our core values, and that's, as a council member, that's something I should have to, and we should all have to strive to. So, back to my question, is this a, how often is this updated and changed?
It's a really great, it's an important question.
Because I think it's something that we should promote or make public, that everyone understands and they see as they walk in, and, and so, is it a permanent, is it a permanent device, whatever it is, whether it's a placard or something, that's permanent, and how permanent should it be? At some point in time, a future council will come in and go, you know what, I think we need to update these. But is it every two years, or every one year? You know, are we going, that's my question.
So I can, I can tell you sort of a practice, and you all have to decide how you want to approach it, because every organization and community is different. So, the mission, mission, that's funny, mission, vision, values, those should be kind of as permanent as it can be in the world of local government, right? Because it could be another election comes along and newly-elected officials say, that's not our vision anymore, right? But for the time that you all are in office, you should be promoting this, talking about it, having it up on town hall, that's a great idea. The things that should be evaluated every year in a, in a strategic plan are your goals. Every year around this time, you should go revisit your goals, what progress did we make? How does that affect your operating plan moving forward? How does it affect your budget? But the mission, vision, values, that is core for whatever period of time you're gonna say your strategic plan is valued for.
Right.
Makes sense?
Yeah.
So some organization, or like some councils, it's four years, shouldn't be more than five, so that changes in five years.
I mean, Jamie, it's probably gonna be every two years, like, and every board change or board update is when people probably look at it. Like, next year for the retreat, we probably, probably would, anyone might look at it, but probably not do any changes to it.
Right, wholesale, you know, wholesale change.
Yeah, right. All right, so are you ready to make like a squirrel? Stretch, stretch?
And I don't need the tower point, like, it's not imperative, so...
All right.
Be nice, though.
Well, you'll get it pulled up for the next couple of ones, but for this one, I have a handout, so it's just one little blurb that I was gonna show.
All right.
Maybe you're not allowed to stretch?
No.
Oh, we gotta stretch for it.
Yes, get up and stretch.
You gotta stretch for it.
Like a squirrel.
You have to stretch like a squirrel.
We had to do, do that little stretch, we had a five-hour stretch yesterday.
Old do you are?
Out of shape, man.
Old?
Letting you know, email it.
No, we got it, we got it.
We're finally making progress.
Oh, good, you got it. We're safe.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, I remember.
Maybe we'll child.
Nope.
Sometimes. You did?
Yeah.
So you heard my comments or something? It's frustrating, you know, we're always, because when it was raining, would be...
We didn't have to go to there.
Limited, we're not everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
There's too many teams.
Well, yeah.
Is it too far to ask for a bottle of red wine? Uh-uh. That's our snack break.
You give that, um, red, it's not what he's doing now.
Don't need to add anyone today.
It goes with it, thank you.
So, we have, just have to get email or...